Okay, so welcome everyone. I'm Anne Bosler. I'm the Chair of the Policy and Funding Committee of the City of San Diego Commission for Arts and Culture. Thank you so much for joining us today for this special meeting of the Policy and Funding Committee. I'd like to ask my colleagues on the committee to please keep your video on throughout the meeting to help remain as accessible as possible to our audience. And I ask the same please of the participating city staff. Now we're going to do a quick roll call to confirm commissioner attendance. When I call your name, please unmute yourself and say present. Commissioner Rebecca Smith. Commissioner Yudoko Nwana.
Here.
Hello, Commissioner Keith Obsted.
Present.
Hello, good afternoon. Commissioner Tyler Hughes.
Here, present.
Thank you. Commissioner Tracy Dezenzo.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hello, I'm here.
Hello, thanks for being here. Thank you all for your attendance. And also joining us today are city staff, including our Executive Director Jonathan Glass, our Chief of Civic Art Strategies Christine Jones, our Senior Arts and Culture Funding Manager Diana Ag... I'm going to butcher this and I apologize. Agnostini, did I get that right? I trust I did. I will get correction later if I need to. And Project Manager Bel Reza and Arts and Culture Manager Carla Centeno-Giri. And I see that Commissioner Rebecca Smith has joined us. If you would say present.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for joining us. So before we get into today's agenda, I'm going to call on Beth Reza to please review the guidelines with us for today's meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you've noticed, we are conducting this meeting as a Zoom webinar. We've been doing this for a while in an effort to provide greater accessibility. Members of the public may join the meeting as webinar attendees in order to provide virtual non-agenda and agenda comment in real time. Committee members, city staff and authorized presenters are attending the meeting as panelists, and the meeting will function for them identically for typical Zoom meeting. Let's do a real quick refresher. Please remember to stay muted when you're not talking and unmute yourself when you speak. Please use your chat window. Please keep your chat window open at all times as you will be using the chat window to signal when you'd like to speak. We do recognize that there is a hand raising function. However, we request that you type "speak" in the chat window for the record, and the chair will acknowledge requests in order. Please refrain from using the meeting chat for anything other than signaling that you'd like to speak in order to comply with Brown Act. Thank you, Chair Bosler.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. So now we're... Excuse me, we're going to move on to the non-agenda public comment. The public was invited to submit public comment on agenda and non-agenda items via a web form accessible through the agenda and the commission website. Members of the public may also join this meeting as webinar attendees. If members of the public have submitted comments in writing via the web form, staff will read aloud the public comments submitted per City Public Comment Protocol. I will now call on Belle to please read aloud any non-agenda public comment and to call on any attendees who would like to provide comment. Belle?
Okay, perfect. We have one submission for non-agenda public comment, and then I will second with the attendees. So this public comment is from Nicole Oga, and it reads, "I look forward to hearing the third-party DEI reports. I would like to see the DEI reports in full and have these reports presented by the researchers themselves. Also, these reports should be public information since the commission is here to serve our community. Transparency is vital. I appreciate the diversifying of panels, but it still does not address the issue that the algorithm, which relies on AOI, heavily disadvantages smaller organizations. At September 11, 2020 meeting, Leticia, former commission staff, stated after doing an analysis and weighing the benefits of our matching requirements against the unintended barriers created, we found that the barriers disproportionately affects smaller organizations. This demonstrates that the commission acknowledges that using the algorithm, which relies on AOI, creates inequitable funding, but no significant change has been made. I want the commission to enact funding policy changes that dismantle the current barriers that prevent smaller, often BIPOC-led organizations from qualifying for funding." And now for those members of the public in attendance, please click the button to raise your hand to indicate that you would like to comment. I will enable you to speak and send you a prompt to unmute yourself in order. When I call your name, please state name for the record, and you will have three minutes to provide comment, after which we place on mute again. If you're joining via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and I will call on you by the last four digits of your phone number. So please raise your hand now if you'd like to provide non-agenda public comment.
And while you're doing that, Belle, I just want to share that it's my understanding that the full DEI report is available on the commission website. So folks should know that that is posted and has been, and is it fully accessible to everybody that would like to see that?
That is correct, and there is no one raising their hands, so we can move to the next item if you'd like.
Okay, terrific. So at this point, if you would, please read any public comment for this item that was submitted in writing and call on any attendees who would like to provide any comment on this item.
Nothing was submitted for this item, but to those members of the audience in attendance, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand or press star nine. And I'm seeing none, Chair Bosler.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. Let's see here. So now we're going to move on to the commission business. And thank you again, Commissioners, for being present and for reviewing the materials and providing your input on this very important topic before us. What we have before us today is an action item, and that is to endorse the diversity, equity and inclusion, the DEI evaluation, and the next steps as follows. We want to, number one, to acknowledge the attached assessment as submitted by RISE Research and Analytics. Two, we want to endorse the staff recommendations. And three, we want to recommend that the commission and staff commence with Phase Three. So just to be clear, so that everybody's on the same page, what that means is that we are accepting the report. We are accepting the feedback that has been offered thus far. And the Phase Three is where we have an opportunity to go into the public and to be able to garner additional information, additional feedback from which to be able to make final decisions on how we proceed. So before we move on, Belle, if you would, read any public comment for this particular item that was submitted in writing and call on any attendees who would like to provide comment on this specific item.
Okay, we did have several submissions, so please bear with me. But I will go ahead and begin to read those, and then I'll call on the audience in attendance. So the first one is from Lauren Garces. "Thank you to all the staff and representatives who have opened this forum to listen to the equitable changes needed for the community. As many nonprofit workers know, we often wear multiple hats in the organization. I have fulfilled event production, programming, marketing and grant writing roles within many nonprofits serving marginalized, diverse and out-risk communities. One of the main tangible barriers for many nonprofits, especially BIPOC-serving, is their inability to meet a minimum $5,000 grant ask within a 3-1 match. It is a cumbersome process to get access to funding, have the appropriate insurance, 2 million requirements to work with the city and maintain a working program development arm within each organization. Lowering the minimum ask and matching requirements goes a long way for organizations doing phenomenal work to provide art that is healing in communities that need it most. Outreach, equitable barrier solutions and third-party DEI reports presented by researchers are suggestions I would like to recommend. Thank you for your time and consideration of these extra steps that truly make a difference for communities in need." The second comes from Nicole Oga. "I am with Movement Catalyst San Diego, and I live in District 3. I appreciate the commission doing outreach to communities that receive little to no funding from the Commission for Arts and Culture, but it does not address the policy and funding inequities that are rampant throughout the application process. If the application process is so complicated that the commission has to hold seminars, workshops to help smaller orgs apply, it shows the process has too many barriers and needs to be completely redone. At the April 9 meeting, Jonathan Glass had proposed that the application process be kept as is, citing the amount of work it would take to amend the process for 2022. This directly translates to the commission upholding a labor-intensive, outdated and inequitable system that has long marginalized small BIPOC-led organization. This past year, 87% of funding was given to Districts 1, 2 and 3, which is only 3 out of 9 districts. This demonstrates how inequitable the current process is. As shown by the 2020 funding allocation, the funding process is broken and must be drastically changed. I urge the commission to enact actual policy change to create more equitable funding allocation." And then number three by Brian Biche. "Smaller organizations, which often represent BIPOC, are disadvantaged by the current application process. Policy and funding inequities will be perpetuated by keeping this policy set in place. In order to really have a greater impact, the process needs to be fundamentally changed. The use of this algorithm, which relies on annual operating income, creates outcomes that perpetuate inequalities in funding, a fact that has already been acknowledged by the commission. There are too many barriers to equitable funding distribution, and the process needs to be reworked to acknowledge these shortcomings while providing a better alternative without the inherent biases that cripple the current system. Further outreach needs to provide better options for privileging smaller organizations, which are disadvantaged under the status quo. There also needs to be more transparency in the review process, including making reports public and providing further information on diversity, equity and inclusion criteria." Then number four by Gladys Ornellis. "The application process must be simplified, and application itself should never serve as a barrier to applicants nor a leader of applicants. If the application remains complicated, you're only increasing the gap of success for smaller organizations, therefore limiting success to larger organizations that already have the funding and/or people needed to complete the application. There's no justification for keeping the process the way it is. Additionally, if the commission has acknowledged that using the algorithm, which relies on AOI, creates inequitable funding, why wasn't this prioritized for changes? Or at least assign a team member to review the results of the algorithm to make up for the inequity. It does not make sense to move forward with this process knowing this information, yet not making some adjustments for those who are unfairly targeted. It's completely unfair. Lastly, research should be public information since the commission is here to serve our community. Please release the results and have the researchers explain their own conclusions. Thank you." The next one by Leland Ornellis. "Please address the complexities in the funding process for funding. AOI greatly disadvantages smaller organizations. Please include more DEI reports and have them submitted by researchers." Number six, Thelma Verrado de Castro. "I am a San Diego playwright. Please support a more just funding system to support more diverse programming. Doing outreach to communities that receive little to no funding from the Commission for Arts and Culture is a good approach, but it does not address the policy and funding inequities that are rampant throughout the application process. If the application process is so complicated that the commission has to hold seminars, workshops to help smaller orgs apply, it shows the process has too many barriers and needs to be completely redone. Two, we appreciate the diversifying of the panels, but it still does not address the issue that the algorithm, which relies on AOI, heavily disadvantages smaller organizations. At September 11, 2020 meeting, Leticia, former commission staff, stated after doing an analysis and weighing the benefits of our matching requirements against the unintended barriers created, we found the barriers disproportionately affect smaller organization. The commission has acknowledged that using the algorithm, which relies on AOI, creates inequitable funding, but has done nothing to change this." Number seven, Marty Flores. "It would be great to see the third-party diversity, equity, inclusion DEI reports and have them presented by researchers. This information is expected to be public as the commission is here to serve the community. Additionally, we appreciate the diversifying of the panels, but it still does not address the underlying issues. There are still substantial barriers that disproportionately affect smaller organizations. The algorithm used relies on annual operating income, AOI, and although the commission has acknowledged the use of AOI heavily disadvantages smaller organizations, there has been no action to change this. In the policy funding for FY21, no changes were made. The commission stating they did not have enough time to enact changes for FY21. Now we are concerned there will not be changes for FY22 and are going to use the same system as previous years, already acknowledged to be inequitable." Number eight, David Polakowski. "Members of our community are saying they're disadvantaged by the current application process, which means it needs to be reworked as quickly as possible to allow the most voices to be heard and equitably. The commission has said a number of times that the change is coming, yet none has been enacted, and the issues that may stymie that progress are not addressed. We need a good faith effort from this commission to eliminate barriers in service of the community." Number nine, Edward Pogue. "Outreach to communities that receive little to no funding from the commission is a good approach, but it does not address the policy and funding inequities that are rampant throughout the application process. The fact that the commission holds workshops to walk smaller organizations through the process of applying is a sure sign that the process itself is too convoluted and needs to be simplified to remove barriers to smaller organizations. The third-party diversity, equity, inclusion DEI reports should be made public and presented by researchers who assembled them. The algorithm that selects organizations receiving funding still relies heavily on annual operating income, AOI, as a variable. This places smaller organizations that are tremendous disadvantaged. This has been acknowledged before the committee before, on September 11, 2020, when it was noted by commission staff that after doing an analysis and weighing the benefits of our matching requirements against the unintended barriers created, we found that the barriers disproportionately affect smaller organizations. The algorithm should be adjusted to weight AOI substantially less in its calculations, allowing smaller organizations a better chance of securing funding that will prove transformational for them as opposed to perpetuating the status quo." If the... Oh, number 10, Quay Vitrone. "If the application process is so complicated that the commission has to hold seminar workshops to help smaller orgs apply, it shows the process too many barriers and need to be completely redone. We appreciate the diversifying of the panels, but it still does not address the issue that the algorithm, which relies on AOI, heavily disadvantages smaller organizations. The commission has acknowledged that using the algorithm, which relies on AOI, creates inequitable funding, but has nothing to change this. The lack of action, transparency and accessibility is extremely disappointing and inequitable for the community. Discussion is great, but actions and changes are needed to build community trust." Number 11, Trixie Agio. "My name is Trixie Agio. I am part of the Movement Catalyst San Diego. I have attended several of these meetings only to be disappointed by commission's failure to address the policy and funding inequities that are rampant throughout the application process. If the application process is so complicated that the commission has to hold seminar workshops to help smaller organizations apply, the whole process needs to be reworked. Also, the algorithm, which relies on AOI, heavily disadvantages smaller organizations. This has been admitted by the commission multiple times, and it keeps pushing... It keeps being pushed off into the future. The panel has done some work to help with the funding inequities, but the policies and systems are not reformed. There will not be enough meaningful progress. As the commission, you cannot acknowledge and say you are working against systemic racism and at the same time stop working because you are just following your rules and bylaws. Those rules and bylaws are part of the racist systems. The work of making real change is hard, but we are your constituents. You have access and power we do not have. If you really want to fight for us, with us, please do it." And number 12, Ashley Gardner. "Over the years, I have submitted many successful grant requests to the Arts Commission since 2002, back in the days when all submission documents needed to be printed in 14 copies, three-hole punched and delivered to commission offices. It was a challenge back then. Going online was a big improvement, but I have always felt that the process so overburdened any small organization trying to grow that would most give up and never even try. This is still true today. Compared to the county grant, which is straightforward and four pages only, this grant requires many hours and attention and detail that is arduous. The result being, small orgs are not represented and the payment schedule is backwards. The smaller you are, the less you get. That should be reversed so that new and struggling organizations can flourish. Keep the arts local and grassroots, not corporate." And the final one by Leah Goodwin. "I am writing this letter in support of the staff report and RISE research document. I have been involved with the Arts Commission since its inception and remember welcoming Victoria Hamilton into her position as the president of the fledgling African-American writers and artists of San Diego. I donated hours of my time to the diversity initiative of the 80s. I watched the special projects funding, then the only place we could qualify disappear. The story goes on. I am no stranger to arts and public processes. I was the last executive director of the County Arts Council, and I've held many important leadership roles in arts. Today, reading the research report, hearing the staff report and looking at DEI statements, engagement and inclusion being actually on the agenda makes me very proud and excited. I fully support the Art and Culture Commission's journey into a deeper way to engage, support and promote the many artists of color who have not been able to participate due to the systemic policies and problems of the past. To the new team, I say bravo." Then now we'll... To those members of the public in attendance, please click the button to raise your hand to indicate that you would like to comment, and I will enable you to speak. Okay, Nicole, I'm gonna allow you to talk and set up my timer for three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you can... You can go ahead and begin now, and your three minutes will begin.
All right. My name is Nicole, and I am here because I care about the work that you all are doing to create a more equitable process, and I appreciate that you're doing this work. And I feel that there's a lot more that can be done. I was only able to read the staff recommendations and the first seven pages of the RISE Research and Evaluation Report. It's a pretty lengthy report, and I appreciate the detail, and I hope I have more time to read it in the coming days. I noticed that on page six of the RISE Research and Evaluation Report, they have a special recommendation for fiscal year 2022. In summarization, it says, "Assuming that due to COVID-19, the transient occupancy tax is still much less than normal for fiscal year 2022, meaning there would be significantly less funding for the Arts and Culture Commission to allocate. RISE Research and Evaluation recommends for fiscal year 2022 that any organization that has an annual operating income of $5 million or more would be ineligible to apply for the organizational support program. In the two scenarios that they lay out, this one change could potentially yield $1 to $2 million more dollars to be distributed to other smaller organizations. I noticed in the staff recommendations that the staff is not recommending that change. I couldn't find anywhere that that was even going to be brought up. So I was wondering why that recommendation for fiscal year 2022 was not being considered and recommended. And thank you."
Thank you, Nicole. I'm gonna go ahead and... Moving. Okay, and seeing nothing else, Chair Bosler. Chair Bosler?
I'm here.
There are no more public comment.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for all of the feedback and contributions. At this point, what we'd like to do is ask Executive Director Jonathan Glass if he would please provide some more information on this action item.
Thank you, Chair Bosler. Happy to do that. Good afternoon, everyone. Excuse me. I thought what I would do is take a few minutes and just preface the conversation with a little bit of background, the work, to remind us all of the work that has taken place over the last couple of years, frankly, beginning before I even arrived, two, two and a half years ago. And then move into the staff recommendations that are in your packet. So... Excuse me. Could we go to the next slide, please, Belle? So I'd like to begin with just some history. So to remind you all, we began this initiative in late 2019 and early 2020. It did slow a bit with the onslaught of COVID. So the work that would have happened last spring was moved to the summer and fall simply because of this once-in-a-lifetime event called COVID-19. However, going back to 2018, just a reminder for context, the commission held listening sessions with community members and grantees, in particular, to hear input on the funding program. My first meeting, as a matter of fact, as staff, was a special meeting of this committee held at Golden Hall in November of 2018, a meeting that many of you were at. And we received considerable, really practical input from existing and past contractors, contract partners, grantees. A few takeaways from that meeting was that we were able to implement relatively quickly a reinstitution of an appeals process for applicants. And we expanded the public comment portion of the public meetings of the Arts Commission and Policy and Funding Committee. So we were very focused right then on just reintegrating public input into the work of this commission. Since that time, we've made incremental changes to the funding program to reduce barriers, increase access, refine the panel process, as some of the guest speakers have noted. This past year, when COVID hit, we very quickly reduced the reporting requirements. We were, I'm proud to say, one of the fastest of the local arts agencies in California to do that. And more importantly, we reduced the matching requirement to one-to-one, and that's where it stays now. And we consistently hear that was a barrier. Very pleased that we were able to move it down to one-to-one, and that's a permanent reduction that we've carried into FY22. So my job here today as staff is to update you on the work thus far in the city's Arts and Culture Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Initiative that we began in late 2019 and early 20. So this is, as Chair Bosler said, this is an action item today. Taking the action item today to acknowledge the work thus far and move it to the Commission for Arts and Culture with the recommendation that the commission discuss the work in detail in a workshop format in May or June. So just to be clear, you're not endorsing recommendations. You're acknowledging and receiving the information today and moving it to a workshop format where you can dig in. As one of the speakers said today, it's a lot of information. As one of the speakers said today, it's a lot of information in a large thoughtful thorough. Assessment. So we need to make sure that we have time for the commissioners to dig into it. As well as community engagement, which we'll get to in a minute. I also want to take a minute and acknowledge the role of city staff in this process. This really has been a team effort over the last nine months. All of the staff worked with our consultants. So I wanted to thank the entire team, but in in particular, Bel Reza, Carla Centeno and Christine Jones. I also want to give a very sincere shout out and thanks to. Our colleague Letitia Gomez Franco, who was really the guiding force in this. And would be presenting this to you today if she was still on staff. She's not in the audience, but I hope she sees this and knows that we're sending her a big thanks. And look forward to her working with us as we move this forward. So, excuse me, one second. Okay, so again, a little more preface work to remind you, in early 2020, the city published. A RFQ, a national RFQ, it was a three-part request for proposals with three phases. To start to address intentionally our work around DEI. The first component called for an assessment of the overall arts and culture programs, protocols, policies and procedures. That is the work that was conducted by RISE Research and Analytics. It's in the package today. The second component of the RFQ called for DEI training for staff and current members of the Commission for Arts and Culture. The third component is for community engagement. I'd like to quickly just start with the second component. We contracted MJR Associates based in Dallas to conduct the DEI training. Which took place during the fall of 2020 and all, if not all of you participated in the commissioner component of that. That firm was selected due to, excuse me, due to its deep expertise in local arts agency equity training across the country. And really importantly, in communities of all sizes. One of the results of that work by MJR and Associates is a 20-minute DEI training video. We incorporated into our panel training program this winter. Due to the length of the video, we won't show it today at this meeting. But it's an excellent video and we're happy to share it with any of you if you haven't seen it. And we're happy to share it with any members of the public as well. For phase one. Research, RISE Research and Analytics, based here in San Diego, was contracted to conduct the assessment of our internal policies and procedures. Why RISE was selected for a variety of reasons. Including the firm's familiarity with San Diego cultural landscape. As well as their work in arts education, philanthropy and public policy and their deep, deep, deep commission. Commitment to social, cultural and racial equity. And forgive me as I turn my page. I want to also give a thanks to RISE for the really solid, solid work on this assessment. And in particular, Julie Kendig. Who was the project lead and I believe Julie is in the audience today. I want to give a big shout out to Julie. She was very available and worked so closely with us. It was. A hope, open heart and really very committed to the work. I also want to acknowledge and thank Shayla James, who was a member of the RISE team and a research analyst. They were both great partners. You know, just to brag and a shout out, Shayla is one of our rising arts leaders and a great community leader here, friend. And colleague of the commission as well. So what you have in the packet today is the assessment submitted by RISE. And a staff report that itemizes the recommendations and responds with current viability, possible benchmark dates and. Potential policy considerations for the future. Essentially, what we've done is the staff report calls out areas where we. Are already making headway, areas where we would like to do considerable, we would need to do considerable policy work. And areas where frankly, California state law restricts, restricts, restricts us. And again, that is the work that we have to get into over the next few months in a deeper way. Because this is a sizable document and a lot of information. Instead of going item by item, I would like to highlight a few areas within the categories in the study. And then, of course, I want to reserve time for discussion and then moving into. A quick discussion about third phase and what that could look like. So with your permission, Anne, I'd like to move to the next slide. Which. Let's go back one more slide, Belle. Let's stick with this one for a second. So these are the, think of them as the categories or buckets. Inside the study, awards, submittal process, online platform, technical assistance, panel process. Some of the recommendations, as outlined in the report. We've already started working on. Some of the recommendations are an easy lift. That we can implement in FY23 in the guidelines. That we'll be working on over the next three months. Some of these are bigger considerations that. We would have to respond to from a legal perspective, policy changes, procurement changes, et cetera. I do want to say, big tent. Response to the report, really solid recommendations, very practical things that we can implement over the next. Coming months into a few years. The awards. The awards, obviously, this is a big interest area for community members. At the end of the day. What is the money about? Excuse me. As I mentioned. The FY22 funding guidelines that were posted in September guide the allocations for FY22. So in other words, the guidelines that were posted in FY22 or for FY22 back in September. Is what we have to use for the allocations that you are accepting and recommending. To the Mayor and City Council. Those are city legal documents posted. So we're obligated to follow those. What the real focus can be on now is how are we going to make refinements, adjustments and shifts for FY23 and FY24? I also want to just note in this space, because this is a particularly important space. We found in this last fiscal year, in this current fiscal year, fiscal agents. Are going to help us lower barriers tremendously. So when we come back and talk in group, you know, in about a month. We can really dig in with you on how we can identify fiscal agents in every city council district. So we can lower those thresholds and we're not. Creating the expectations that individual artists and artist teams, creative teams have to create a 501(c)(3), Have to go through our process, et cetera. I think that's going to be a huge, short-term tool. For us to implement. Submission process. We all agree, our process is complicated. Staff has already been researching new software that we've been testing with our IT team. This is one of those areas where we don't have. We can't take action immediately on acquiring new software. That is, that is something that's part of the annual budget process for the city. So we agree that we've got to minimize and make the whole software system much easier to use. Technical assistance is an area that we can really focus on in a much bigger way in this coming year. And happy to dig into that with all of you during our workshop. Panel process, we are happy and proud of the way that we've been able to really refine that panel process. We've talked about this quite a bit, so I I won't dig into it today. But I think that's been one of those areas we could rather quickly really push the conversation forward. Marketing and outreach, the same, we've got a lot of work to do, but that is an area that we can simply deliver. Relatively quickly over the summer and fall. In this case, it's only staff time. It's not actual budget obligations. You know, it's really important to acknowledge that this was not, and it, this was a DEI assessment of all of our work. Not just the funding program. So there was considerable time on the public art program as well. Staff is fully. Supportive of all the recommendations of the public art program. Per process, those recommendations will be moved over to the Policy and Funding Committee, or I'm sorry, the Public Art Committee for them to dig in. And bring those, their thoughts back to the commission as a whole. Council policy. I think everyone knows that the the layers that inform of our our work as a city agency. Start with city charter, then municipal code, ordinances. Excuse me, commission policies and procedures. So as we all dig into and make recommendations based on this report. That's the time that we can actually look at any adjustments to council policy. I think you all know here, staff has already worked on some refinements to council policy. We held them until after this study came to you all, so we can make sure that council policy as proposed. By staff and would be endorsed by you. But ultimately approved by city council. Is in alignment with any recommendations coming out of this DEI study that are. Legally allowable and that you're recommending as a advisory body to city council. So bureaucratic speak to what, to say, that's a few steps. We need our action plan in first so that we have something to inform any proposed recommendations, council policy. And then the last thing I would say is commissioner nominations. All great recommendations. As you all know, those are all recommendations and the process. Of appointments are managed through the Office of Boards and Commissions. They are always happy to see. Outside recommendations. So staff has already sent these recommendations from RISE over to the Office of Boards and Commissions. It is a very brief overview. I'm happy to stop here. And or we can move into phase three recommendations as well.
What's your preference, Jonathan?
Why don't we round it out with phase three, this actually, and then turn it back to you for discussion. Can you go to the next slide, please? This is just a reiteration, phase two, working with Margie Reese Johnson and Associates. This is the work that we did. Next slide. So. The, the next step in this would be phase three, which is you all accepting this information. Recommending it to the full commission. And then what we're proposing is that the commission moves into a facilitated workshop format. Before the end of the fiscal year, to dig into this document, what it means. To really address your need for an equity statement and how you get to. Adopting an equity statement. Creating an ad hoc committee that I believe Chair Pootray has already asked. Commissioner Nuwana to chair. And then we really believe what you need, what we need to do together is create a DEI action plan. What is our path forward over the next year to 18 months? What are we going to tackle? What is the timeline? What are the priorities? What can we do? When? So those are our recommendations from the staff and happy to open it up to questions or discussion.
If you have questions or want to comment, please type speak. Okay, seeing none. Jonathan, thank you so much for all of that information. It's very helpful. I know that ultimately there will be questions, but that's very good foundational information to have. So now what we're going to do is we're going to take action to recommend the full, to the full commission. The endorsement of the diversity, equity and inclusion evaluation and the next steps. Would anybody like to make a motion? Commissioner Smith?
Chair Bosler, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Having a first, is there a second? Commissioner Hughes?
I second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Now that we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Commissioner Upstead, I think you were typing speak to second, but do you have any thoughts or comments?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, seeing none. What we'll do now is we will take the vote. I'll call your name and if you would respond out loud with yea, nay or abstain.
Madam Chair, I just had a quick question.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Jonathan, can you remind us of the dates? The timeline we're looking at for end of the current fiscal year, the beginning of fiscal year 22. Just in terms of when those are.
Tyler, for the end of the fiscal year, is that what you said?
Yes, what, so when you say, you know, by the end of the fiscal year, we hope to have this done. And then, you know, when we're talking about how long we have until fiscal year 22 starts, when, what are fiscal years? What are our dates?
Oh, so, and the fiscal year is June 30th. The, if you're thinking about the funding program, we will go live with. FY23 application guidelines sometime in late September.
Great.
So as you know, May through August is always the dig in and make refinements time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Dizenzo, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, sorry, it's just, it's a lot to take in. And I wanted to, first off, Anne, thank you very much for, before we started this conversation, being very clear on what we were voting on today. I had some concerns and reservations, so I wasn't exactly sure and I appreciate that. Jonathan, also, your information and recap of the current situation is, was really, really helpful and I.
Oh, good.
Appreciate that too. I 100% look forward to these workshops and being able to dig into some of these suggestions. And I think that what comes out of the workshops is going to be extremely. And I think that what comes out of the workshops is going to be extremely valuable. And I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further questions or discussion before we take a vote? Okay. So here we go. We're going to vote with yea, nay, or abstain. Commissioner Rebecca Smith?
Yea, yea, thank you.
Commissioner Yedokunwana?
Yea.
Commissioner Keith Upstead?
Yea.
Commissioner Tyler Hughes?
Yea.
Commissioner Tracy Dizenzzo?
Yea.
And my vote is a yea as well. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. And stay tuned for further conversations. It's definitely going to require everybody who is here, listening, participating and reaching out to many others in the community to make sure that we get the depth and breadth of input that we want to make informed decisions. Commissioner Smith, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Well, given just the comment that you just made, Anne, is there any chance that we can even start to move? Now that we've passed this to move towards, are we doing one workshop, three workshops? When are we doing these workshops? What is the agenda for these workshops? What's the format? You know, I'm going to go, Jonathan's laughing, I see you, but I'm like, let's go, right? This is important work and, and I know all of us have crazy schedules. We're moving into the summer, so just wondering if we could even, I'm not thinking we have to schedule something today, but if we can even get a sense of schedule, agenda, format, and how do we move forward? I want the, I want the community to know we're serious about, about making sure that we, that we address all of these issues.
Executive Director Glass, I'm going to let you handle that.
Happy to. Thank you for that question. And yes, Commissioner Smith, you're always, you're, you're always there to keep us moving. I appreciate it.
Sorry.
No, 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 I appreciate it. Excuse me. Well, you have a couple of options. You could use your next, your meeting next week is the full commission. That agenda is already taken, is already scheduled. So you can, in May, you have a full commission meeting that you can use. You have a policy and funding committee meeting. I'll say, we already has a lot of information we want to bring to that committee in anticipation of working for FY23. Or we schedule a third option is we schedule a special meeting. And I'm also looking at Christine Jones, because she always knows agendas off the top of her head. Do we have space in the May meeting for doing this?
I think there could be a couple of action items, so perhaps a special one, just focus on this would make more sense. Otherwise, it'd have to be a little bit extra long to pad for any action items.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith, did you want to say something else?
No, I just wanted to support Christine on that, a special meeting, I think, would be in order. My son is graduating from college on May 28th, so I won't be here.
Okay, and Commissioner Hughes?
Yes, thank you. And I wanted to endorse a special meeting as well. I think that, and if we, if we're looking for a Free Friday, you know, feel free to smeech one from advocacy, because we're coming to, towards the end of the advocacy season. So if you need a Free Friday, please know that, you know, my committee is happy to give that up. And I know that we're still in the process of looking at times that work for meetings going forward. And I also wanted to just put my thumb on the scale for this slot, actually. The Friday afternoon has lined up well, so if we can do something this way, I highly encourage it. And just because I have my hymnal at hand, I wanted to sing a verse of my favorite hymn, "Let's Get a Cultural Plan in Place", because I think so much of what Rise addresses can be organically and thoughtfully integrated into a cultural plan for the entire city of San Diego and really the entire region. It was interesting hearing one of the, the commenters talk about the county of San Diego. And God bless the county of San Diego and those commissioners, or yes, those county commissioners, but they don't have the kind of oversight structure that we do. Those are more individual county supervisor funds that get distributed out. And we have the more rigorous system. So we are the place that people look to for that kind of leadership. So I hope that we can, you know, form this, take this DEI work that is so necessary and really inspiring and put it into a larger discussion about a grassroots cultural plan. So I will put my hymnal away.
Jonathan, can you speak to that briefly and kind of what the, what the plan or timetable would be for exactly what Tyler's talking about?
Sure. I think you said three things, Tyler. One was the shift of our meetings, our standard meetings. I'll leave that to Belle. She's working on that right now. Second would be taking advocacy meeting time and/or a Friday. And then the third was the question of how does this interface with a cultural plan? So how does this interface with a cultural plan? Just like the creative economy work, doing this DEI work intentionally now sets us up to move much more swiftly into a really thorough cultural planning process as soon as is possible. So it's a beautiful alignment and thank you for your white flag of advocacy on this. The other thing is Belle, where are we with changing meeting times?
We have a few responses in, but I just need to take a look at that and finalize some things before sending to full commission.
Okay, so let me just put it out there. Chair Bosler, if you're looking for a date now, something as early as May 7 at this time could theoretically work for staff. Would you like us to, now, remember that's, this is policy and funding, that's the whole commission, so we would have to doodle poll. But if that's a place to start, that it works with this commission, with this committee, we could start there.
I'm okay with it. I would want to know that that works for other folks that would need to be there to participate. So however we could query folks, I'm happy to free my calendar up to be there.
I don't see a happy Chair Poutrey.
It's the Friday thing. I got all excited about moving it. But as it turns out, that's only John's schedule through May, so.
Also, Commissioner Hughes, what's wrong with your tie?
There's absolutely nothing wrong with my tie, Chair. It has the symbols of the Imperial bad guys from Star Wars all over.
I see. It just was an unfamiliar configuration.
So let's see. Commissioner Dizenzzo, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I actually, I don't work on Fridays, so Fridays work for me on all levels. I'm totally happy with Fridays. Sorry, I just had to put that out there.
That's okay. Commissioner Smith?
So yeah, if we can leave today with a date and time, I think that would be great for all of us in the community. On May 7th, actually, I am moderating for Lead San Diego, the Arts and Culture panel for influence. And so that's going to be super cool. And actually, I should be done by 10:30. So anytime after 10:30 on May 7th would be awesome.
Okay, that's terrific. Would love to know how to be able to jump into that and see you lead that panel. Commissioner Upstead?
Yeah, for the rest of the academic year, we have asynchronous learning on Fridays, so I have some flexibility, so I can do morning or afternoon, whatever works best for everybody.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, let's move on, if we could, to staff reports. Belle, if you would, please read any public comment for this item that was submitted in writing and call on any attendees who would like to provide comments for this item.
Okay, nothing was submitted, but to those members of the public in attendance, please click the button, raise your hand. And seeing none, Chair Bosler.
Okay, wonderful. Now I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director Jonathan Glass to please share the staff reports with us.
I have, thank you, Chair Bosler. I have one really important staff report. I'd like to formally introduce our newest team member, Deanna Augustini. We're very close, Chair Bosler. Deanna Augustini joined us Monday. Is that right, Deanna?
Last week on Monday, yes.
Was the last, oh, all right, so this is the second week now, yes. So just quickly, Deanna's joining us in the position that Letizia Gomez Franco previously had senior project manager for the funding program. I've had the good fortune of knowing Deanna's, as long as I've been here, I met Deanna in her previous position as Executive Director of the Italian Film Festival. Deanna, and let's put you on the spot, would you like to say a few words? This is going to be your, this is going to be your, your team. This is going to be your committee.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you all for, for your work. I am honored and really excited to be joining the committee and the commission. And also really pleased to see all the passion that you all have towards this work and towards our community. Like Jonathan mentioned, I had the pleasure of interacting with the commission, commission and the committee from wearing the hat of the executive director of an arts organization, of a small one. So I definitely understand everything that's being raised. And I am too very passionate about addressing all of the things that we have been mentioning in the past couple of meetings. So yes, putting myself ready to work, ready to fill big shoes. I also know I'm very grateful for what Letizia did and happy to be joining this team. Thank you. And yes, you did an amazing job with my last name, Commissioner and Chair Bosler.
Thanks, Deanna. Welcome again. And that is the end of my report.
Okay, terrific. Any business for future agendas? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for a very productive meeting. Thank you to everybody for attending. Happy Friday. And with that, we adjourn this special meeting of policy and funding.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Take care, everybody.
Everyone, have a great weekend.